All right.
It's 5:30. Let's call this meeting to order. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary Kay, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Dee Bardo?
Here.
Tina Bornman?
Here.
Dr. Noel Deep?
Here.
Jill Maddick Nelson?
Here.
Kristen Mattelwes?
Andy Mary?
Here.
Danny Hyatt?
Here.
Andy Schreiber?
Here.
J.D. Schrader?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum of the board present for this special called meeting. Dr. Sprague asked for this specially called meeting so that we can potentially move forward with a new hire for the Director of Business Services, and we have all the members of the board present, so that's the business that's before us tonight. And is there any public comment? No? All right, then let's move on to Action Item B1, approving the hiring of the new Director of Business Services. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the following new hire, Katie Ostrega, sorry, Director of Business Services.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I would just like to thank you for being here. As I wanted to communicate to Danny, this allows us an additional three weeks, potentially at least, for Katie if she is indeed approved to work with Tim Prunty. If we had waited for the regular board meeting, I just feel as did all parties that loss of transition time would be too valuable. So I appreciate you being here earlier and even if you didn't have a committee meeting tonight, so thank you. And Katie is here with us. So this is Katie Ostrega. She rose to the top of our candidate pool for Business Services Directors. So we discussed that maybe you would have questions or want to ask her a little bit. You can see by the attachment we interviewed, I think it was at six?
Seven.
Seven, thank you. And Katie was one of two finalists and ultimately sits before you tonight for approval. She currently, most recently, is employed at Nicolay College.
Are you employed technically as the Business Director?
No, we do not have a Business Director position currently. I worked in the Finance and Admin team for seven years there, got my whole tenure, starting out at the very first job as Student Receivables, and I currently hold the job of Grants and Project Resource Manager. The institution had a director, went away from the director, came back to it, and they no longer have it. So they've kind of been in and out with the director. Our VP of Finance and Admin oversees that.
What made you interested in doing a job like this?
So my schooling is accounting as well as instructional design and learning technology, so I really like the educational aspect of it. Working in higher ed the last seven years has really had, maybe look outside the box and grow a lot. But I am a graduate of Antigo High School, and so I went to school here my whole life. We moved back when COVID hit, and when I saw this position open, I would just love to bring my expertise and pour my value into somewhere that I have roots and be able to work with people that have similar passions as me, so that's why I decided to apply.
Danny, I have a question.
Sure.
So for the folks that are going to watch this, you know, after this meeting is done, I don't, I'm not sure they're going to hear you.
Oh, okay.
Can we get a chair up to the table where she can be closer to the mic?
Oh, that's the mic.
You're still outspoken already and...
Yeah.
Katie, you sit here.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Angie. Good call.
Did you want me to kind of redo or?
That's high pressure.
Yeah.
Just make it much better than the mics we use.
It is, yep.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody's able to hear. Yeah.
That's a good call.
Julie, seven applicants. How many were interviewed of the seven?
All of them.
Okay.
Did you have to study this weird category-based accounting? If that's the right word yet?
So I have not yet, but just as K-12 has category-based, so does higher ed. They are not the same, but they are built similarly with similar rules and regs. So that is going to be the curve that I'll be learning if approved, is going from what I've learned in higher ed, taking kind of the application of it, but really looking at how K through 12 is built. So I'm excited. It's, accounting is my thing. That's like my first passion. After that, I absolutely love like projects, strategic planning, strengths-based team coaching. I do all of this.
I appreciate your answers. I feel like this is like a round, I don't know how many rounds there were of interviews, but another round of it, and I'm trying not to do that because you already went through that process, and that's why we're here with the recommendation. So Julie, take me through the process that led to your decision-making with seven applicants. I think that's quite promising for us. I don't know that, I wasn't aware that we were, we had active interviews for this position. So I guess I'm just looking at, what did that process look like? How did we narrow down to your, your recommendation to the board, and what does that look like?
So we've been, it was posted at the start of the school year, so we were actually a little disappointed for such a permanent position that there were only seven applicants. And we talked about extending it, but as I shared, we feel that time with Tim, whose last day is January 6th, will be very valuable for whoever is hired. So members of the Business Office and the Central Office Team looked at questions from around the state in terms of previous hires, made them our own, unique to our district, and then over the course of two days, had interviews that were about an hour each. After a lot of discussion, zeroed in on who we felt would be the top two, of which Katie is one, and then invited those folks back. And Katie, for example, spent time in the district. We visited all the schools, you know, chatting with whoever we came across because you really never know who you're going to see. So she had a chance to ask questions. She's met individually with Tim and other folks at Central because we wanted to make sure she had, as much as we wanted information to make a sound decision, we wanted Katie to have her questions answered as well. So, and then at the conclusion of that second interview is when I called her and we made the verbal offer.
What would be the proposed start date?
As soon as possible, but we haven't discussed that pending this meeting. Again, for transition purposes.
What was the hardest question they asked you during the interview and I wasn't answering?
Oh goodness. Probably the hardest question would have been, you know, working as a Director of Business Services. You're dealing with compliance, state, federal regulations. And so there was a question in regards to, have you ever dealt with a situation where someone not necessarily wanted to follow or was trying to, you know, do something that didn't fit? And I have. I've like, I, those questions come across my desk daily working with grants, and some people are like, all right, what do we do to make this work? And that's always my first step is, okay, can we make this work, like in a way? Or is it an absolute no? And I've become pretty, pretty consistent in here's the no, here's the why, here's the rules and regs, and let's figure out what we can do to, you know, work with it. That was probably the hardest question is like thinking back and because I work with it a lot, but have I ever come across like a scenario of, oh, okay, now what do we do? And there has been. And you, you work, you figure it out, and you make the changes as needed, but yeah, that was probably the hardest one.
How's your Microsoft Excel skills?
Oh, fantastic. You kidding me? No, Microsoft is, is a really product I'm very comfortable with. I know that the school district uses Google as a platform. I don't have as much knowledge with it, but I have dabbled a bit into the project facilitation end of it, so using the Jam boards and project management in there, and because I actually prefer it over Microsoft. So I do have some knowledge in the Google realm as well.
Do we, what's our thing when somebody emails her a question? Does then she email the answer just to that board member or to everybody?
Tim?
You mean, should she be hired?
Yes, assuming she's been passed the vote.
Often we try to include the president for certain, but then usually it's the whole board, or I'll put it, week in review, so everyone has the answer. It's usually our mood.
Did we have any applicants, this feels so awkward, and I don't mean it that way. I really truly like asking questions in terms of our, our application decision-making interview process. Did we have any applicants that are currently in Tim's role or have experience specifically in school finance at K through 12?
No.
Good.
So Katie knows she would have to go back to school, get the license. She'd be on provisional, her license with stipulations while she works to complete that.
How long is her license on stipulations good for?
Well, you have to show progress within the first year, but then you can reapply. So she definitely have to enroll right away in the program.
The process to which she would have to go through to get those licenses, what, what does that entail and involve?
Usually it's a master's degree and then the license is an O8. Katie already has a master's, but it would be an additional.
Okay.
And I have been in contact with UW Whitewater figuring out, I've sent all my, like, initial information over. They've looked at it. I would actually be waived out of like the foundational course because I do have my bachelor's in accounting. And so I would be able to start right with the core courses come this spring. They offer three in the spring, three in the fall, and that would be the full amount if I went full-time. I am freshly, a year ago, just received my master's a year ago, so I kind of still know the ropes of working and, and schooling at the same time. So I would be all right with, hopefully, I, I did 12 back then, maybe I'd start out with a little less just to make sure that everything fits, but.
Julie, was that part of the offer that, that we would be paying for part of that?
That's actually in every administrative contract, reimbursement for credits per year. There's a set dollar amount.
Okay.
What are the, what's the actual name of the master's you have to get?
It's a 5008 licensure, but it's a business administration license. So it's specific to Tim's position in learning like the categories and codes.
Oh, okay. So it's like, it's like direct training?
It is DPI.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. So that's what is really nice is between that and then a question that I had asked is what kind of professional development is out there or services for someone coming in not out of K through 12? Because that, you know, higher ed was a curve. I can imagine K through 12 is going to be just as much. And so I am assigned a mentor, and Tim has a really great one in mind that we spoke of because I wanted to make sure I wasn't fed to the wolves. And then, then there's also monthly meetings that his counterparts in him within the K through 12s in Wisconsin attend, and they talk about like what's on the horizon, what do I need to make sure I'm, I'm keeping on top of for the next quarter to make sure that like, because of all the rules and regs, it is really nice kind of partnership with all your counterparts, so.
Does it make you nervous to potentially have to propose cuts? Like, it's a weird thing because in one sense, school districts are, you have a guaranteed revenue source, sort of, compared to a private business. But when you're a declining enrollment district, then that is not pleasant.
Well, and SIR funds and all that. So that's something, I, I've been watching board meetings for a long time. A lot of times they fall on the same night as Nicolay College is, so I'm there and then I jump on. I'm so glad you guys started doing live, so I jump on live. Instead of like proposing budget cuts, which is going to happen, I mean, you're going to have to flex and make changes, is I really like to look at it as how do we plan and build sustainability around what we're doing? If we know we're going to have a cut, how do we create a plan ahead of time to phase that in so it isn't a shock? So it isn't a negative, but we spin it to be something that we're expecting to happen. And so that's how I would kind of look at that, is if we know something was coming up, kind of building around that and making sure we're prepared as proactive as possible.
Was it a unanimous decision with the admin?
It was.
Where'd you?
Things you didn't know. Yeah, no, I'm learning too.
Where'd you go to undergrad?
So undergrad was at Franklin University in Columbus, Ohio, and my graduate is there as well. So UW Whitewater would be a taste of fresh water for me, so that's kind of exciting. What Franklin offered was complete online, and then they also, they do not do like, they do assessments over testing, and so like their assessments are all like, you physically show that you know what you learned, and so it's like semester-long cap, like projects and capstones. And so that's something that I really enjoyed is being able to put to practice what I learned. So that's what drew me to Columbus and Franklin.
Did Tim give you a nice overview? Well, probably not yet, but of like, I assume he just has some files. And then you go through and you sort of modify them each year. You know, it's like a template that you kind of rely on, I assume, which would be the nice part of what happened, the overlap? Are you going to bother him about that once you get approved?
I haven't bothered him too much. He, he showed me a few booklets that he produces and pamphlets, and they look very similar to like different budget books and different things that we provide to our board at Nicolay, and so I was excited to see that. But absolute, I'm the knit and grit, kind of waiting to see, so.
Right. We just don't want to walk ourselves into a huge deficit more than we're expecting because we have a heck of a time trying to pass a referendum here to fix it.
So speaking of that, and you talked about planning ahead, right? So like what, what kind of, do you have experience? If you could tell us a little bit about that with like lean management and how especially lean, you know, finance management, stuff like that, how do you figure out the final next word? How do you plan that ahead?
Yeah, absolutely. So you, coming out of grants, one thing is, is that funding is not guaranteed year to year. So anything that you look at for funding that isn't guaranteed, you want to make sure that if it's, if the revenue is going to stop, that there's a plan in place prior to that. But ultimately, I like to look at different revenues as how can we take this and create value in building a foundation that can create long-term sustainability versus reoccurring costs? Now, if there's something in place already that is a reoccurring cost, what can we do to create value in sustainability without maybe that cost reoccurring? And so how do we build a foundation with what we have? Is that a possibility? If it's not, you know, what is our plan to, to phase that out and kind of really look at what detriment it can cause, or how, how do we answer to that in a different way? So I do have a lot of planning around that with grant funding from Nicolay College, you know, how do we keep going, keep doing what we're doing without creating more revenue generating things? I also have the, this mindset as well as like, what is better to just stop doing? Like, what are we doing that we maybe don't have to be doing, or we don't need to have? You know, where can we cut? Do we need 10 programs, or can we do the same thing with four? You know, really looking and analyzing what you have and what it's doing, and do we have other things that can take up, take that on? So looking at lean management, how do we cut back but not detrimentally, and making sure that we cover our bases ahead of time?
Sure. So it's like, all in the same line. So say for instance, like the CISA contracts. Every year they go up, and I see, in my opinion, it seems like we don't have any tracking of outcomes. And I, I take issue with that because if we don't see the outcomes, if we don't see their metrics, you know, their key performance indicators, what are they doing exactly? How do we justify keep spending money on this? And it keeps going up every year. So that's just something along those lines, too. Do you have any other questions? Otherwise, I have more. I don't want to keep going. Okay. So you mentioned that you were, you came back to the area. Do you, do you live near here?
Yes. So I'm just 10 minutes north of Antigo on County Road I, so very close, in Antigo School District, so.
Okay.
What elementary school did you go to or degrees?
So I went, I started out at Pleasant View, and then I was a transplant and ended up in Crestwood. Loved them both, and then middle school, high school.
Okay. I was just curious about the buildings you had on motion. I'm passionate, too, if we started having to shut them down, but those are already done, so.
So yeah, no emotional attachments for me, cutting, like shutting anything down. Those are gone, so. You didn't ask me that.
I had an emotional attachment. I tried to keep it.
Well, then you know, oh my goodness, I came across Miss Cindy Tyler in North, I believe, and I was like, and I like stopped and I had to back up, and I was like, is that like, Miss Tyler, like Miss Tyler Tyler? And I walked in, she knew me. I'm like, I don't know if that's a good thing. It was fantastic to see it here. And yeah, so it was nostalgic going through the buildings and meeting some of the teachers, so.
So did you have Miss Tyler at Pleasant View?
I did.
Oh, wow.
I did. And then I also, when I was at the high school, I did early release to go do reading in the kindergarten class at Pleasant View because of, you know, near and dear to my heart. And so, yeah, it was, it was really neat to see her.
Do you have like any kind of background or expertise in like strategic planning, stuff like that?
So exciting that you should ask. That's actually where my current, my current professional development has all been focused. I was accepted into a nationally renowned emerging leaders program called SCUP, and so it stands for Society, College, and University Planning, all around strategic planning. The foundation, how to pull your facilities plan in with your budgeting, in with your grants, and making sure that everything is working in unison and creating the most value and impact that you can. And so that is like, anytime I have, that is where I'm focusing at the current moment for professional development. I've started and been part of the team that's kicked off Nicolay College's strategic planning, which is current, currently going, being redone. And so I've been working with the board with that, and along with building the plan to kind of infuse it throughout the institution, so. And she was part of our district's strategic planning task force over the summer. As a community member. You're okay.
Come on in. You still work here?
You're just plotting new demands.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good one, Doc. Tim, you're six minutes early and we're good.
You're good.
Okay, so for transparency with an approval tonight, Julie, Dr. Sprague, sorry, I forgot twice, I think. We would be, you would discuss a start date, and we would then, so your, Katie's employment would overlap Tim's remaining time with the district, so we would be paying two position, or two people in the same position for the purpose of onboarding and training and learning.
And that was always the plan?
That was always the plan. Yes, it was.
Yeah, I was wanting to make sure, because I feel like any, any newspaper follow-up, it would be helpful to, for people watching, we know the why behind it, because it's a, it's a big salary position, two of them, and so that's why is to help better the district once Tim starts to enjoy retirement.
In my tenure, Jill, we've not done this with any position, but knowing, you know, how critically important Tim's role is, and Katie relatively inexperienced and earning the license, we wanted to do the best job we could, hence the meeting tonight, too, as opposed to end of the month.
And I made that assumption right away because she's going to have to go back possibly tomorrow and say to them, oh, by the way, which means maybe two weeks, maybe longer, depending on what they tell you that you can leave.
Because of the position I hold within the institution currently, I am required to give a 30-day. I do have a agreement kind of planned out that hopefully they will agree, and I can get some training ahead of time in a part-time and then roll into a full, full-time fashion. So yes, you're exactly right. It's, you know, tomorrow is the day, you know, pending with the decisions tonight that would dictate. So no later than December 8th would be my hope that I would be full, fully onboard at that point. So, and hopefully part-time before the kind of learning. I think I'll have enough to consume after a day or two to just digest, and so having that for a couple of days and then, you know, coming in full-time, I think would be really helpful.
My last question is, is not for Katie, it's for, well, I guess it's not really a question. So I don't, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I did not have any idea that we were even at the interview stage for this position. This is not again, nothing personal here. And so Julie, at our last board meeting, you said you, you wouldn't mind if, if board members sat in on these interviews, but we literally had no clue you were even interviewing these seven people. So...
When the revised policy was discussed, I did say we're in the middle of strategic planning interviews in public session, but...
Or you mean?
In the meeting.
I mean, not, not strategic business manager.
Not strategic planning.
Oh, is that what I said?
Yeah.
Business manager, thank you.
Okay.
And then because that policy hasn't been revised yet to include board members, we just went ahead as we have for the last five years. We followed the same protocol until that policy would be changed.
Okay.
I'll call the question.
Okay, question's been called. Is there a second call to question?
I'll second.
Yep. All in favor of calling question?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So you have in front of you, the motion on the floor is to approve the following new hire, Katie Ostrega. Is that right on it?
Katie Ostrega.
Ostrega, okay. Director of Business Services. Motion's been made and seconded. We will have a roll call vote, please. Mary Kay.
Bardo?
Yes.
Bornman?
Yes.
Deep?
Yes.
Maddick Nelson?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Katie, welcome aboard.
Yes.
Oh, you got to put up with us.
Well, if you don't mind, I'll stick around for tonight.
Sure.
Give the chips to you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Congratulations.
Julie, thanks for doing this.
Of course.
Okay, we are, we're going to end this meeting one minute before the next meeting starts. After the conclusion of this meeting, I'll ask the board members that are not part of the committee to take a seat in the audience. The board members that are part of the committee can remain seated at the table as we move forward. Motion to adjournment? Motion's been made, seconded, fight over between the two of them. All in favor of adjournment, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
I'll call the meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary Kay, roll call.
Dr. Dave Bardo?
Here.
Jill Medic Nelson?
Here.
Dr. Maldeep?
Here.
Tim Fronti?
Yep.
Julie Sprague?
Mm-hmm.
And Danny Hyatt?
Here.
I'm guessing there's no public comment, unless our new business manager wants to thank us publicly, but I'll let her pass. I'll let her pass. Of course, see, what we're doing here is, she's going, oh, no, he's in charge of the finance committee.
Katie, you want to join us, Dave, Meg?
If that's all right.
Sure.
Sure. Why don't you come on up? I'm trying to find my, there we. All right, new business, Tim, budget update.
Okay, so I, this is the standard form, and I just want to highlight a couple of items that are going to be different. So, up until we adopted the budget, I had it titled in the first column, I think we called it maybe Working 2223. So, now, since the budget is adopted, I'm officially calling it the budget. And then, if you look at the fiscal year-to-date, this will be the last significant month that we run in the RIT. In December, we're going to get equalization aids, and then in January, in February, we start getting tax receipts along with other aid. So, you know, as we talked about at the budget committee, or at the hearing, the next couple of months, we're going to be revenue positive. So, you can see right now, at this point in the school year, we're almost running, and we are running double the, more than double the expenses over the revenues. To note is, you can see that most of our aid is coming from the state, and that's before they set the October aid certification, they give us preliminary equalization value and equalization aid, and that's where that's coming from. The $859,000 is primarily federal, and it's going to be ESER 2 money that was coming in. In October, we did have, the ladies knew we were going to be cash short, so we made a claim, our claim goes from the first quarters to the end of September. They made a claim in the middle of October. We got notification about, I don't know, about a week after the board meeting, that we're going to be receiving that aid in 14 days, that claim. So, we're going to be much better off by the end of the month than I initially estimated. So, that's a good thing. And then, you can see that we're running pretty typical from one year to the next, with the biggest difference in expenditures being staffing as it relates to ESER funding. So, that's really all I've got. I don't know if you want me to point out anything else.
Well, I mean, we're looking good, because we're.
Well, we will look good starting in December.
Right, because we're, you know, we, the, well, our expenses are up $800,000, but our money in is one point over a mil. So, we're plus $200,000 just on that comparison. So, good job. And the big, the biggie is what you talked about, where they got the ESER money in right away.
We'll see that in November.
Yeah. That, that's huge.
This meeting's going to be pretty short.
That's okay.
Okay, so.
My, my assumption, Tim, is as the year went on, it would probably get.
Well, they better catch up, right?
Well, that would also get shorter, but, okay.
Anything else, or do you want to move on?
We will move on to ESER funding evidence-based strategies.
Okay, so let's open up the budget handout first. And this is a slide I showed at, at the budget hearing. And Dr. Bardo asked me to, to do a little projecting forward and looking at what kind of salaries are going to be hitting sort of the fiscal hook. So, you can see we're budgeting about a million and a half dollars in salary next year, and at some point, the board will have to decide along with administration, what positions we're going to keep and which ones are going to get cut. And, you know, when we talk about a low-revenue spending district, things like instructional coaches, school psychologists, social workers, those kinds of things that we've included in the ESER funds, we didn't have beforehand. You know, Heidi makes it pretty clear to us at an admin meeting that, in comparison to a lot of other districts our size, we have fewer of those types of positions. So, so that's going to be a kind of a day of reckoning. And we, in the second handout, I'm not going to speak to it, and I'll let Julie if she wants to, but those evidence-based strategies, that's a handout I got from the DPI. And when you look at that, it's, it's the research behind the benefits of having a school psych and a school social worker, and additional counselors, and behavioral specialists, and instructional coaches. That those, there's evidence behind that from a research base that proves that those strategies improve outcomes. And so, that, that's the basis.
Question. So, what are options next year? Are there grants out there? Are there other resources that we can tap into to keep those positions going? Have you shared any wisdom with Julie going forward?
We talk about that a lot, Dr. Deep, and as of yet, you know, we have some ideas, but there are no actual plans in place. Like, when Katie talked about if something is going to be cut, get ahead of it and look at that, how can we keep the primary intent going, even if the position, for example, or the program goes away? So, we don't have any actual plans yet, just general discussions.
Start working on that.
We do.
If you expect the board to say yes to something, you know, you need to have some concrete evidence to show that, you know, this is how we herd fund those positions.
Right.
Because, yes, those are all behavioral health, mental health services are key, but how do you keep that going for a district like ours, limited resources? You know, especially now, when the school district, when the teachers, when the board, when the community, the families see those benefits now. And then, when you, even though we did it last year, I remember at the middle school when Tim Fronti said, well, in 24, you have to think about it, but the 24 budget will be around the corner soon, and how are you going to go back and tell those parents, those families, that maybe we won't be able to? But it's like we have given them certain resources, and now we're taking those away.
Right.
That's, that's the common interpretation. It doesn't come to the fact that, you know, we have some funds, so we started this, and this was what we had discussed last year, when we started using these ESER funds. So, I guess we'll probably have to start planning for those. Or if we truly can't find any source for them, then how best can you mitigate the damages?
Right.
So, I guess it gets back, and we're going to talk a little bit more about it, I think, in the next agenda item, but it gets back to that, if we're a low-revenue spending district, and we compare ourselves using ESER funds to, you know, because as a percentage, we got a higher percentage of ESER funding than districts, other districts might have because of our poverty. It was based on Title I allocations. So, as a district, we receive significant Title I funding. Consequently, we receive a lot of ESER funding. So, we have to think about, do we, if we are a low-income district, what services do we want to offer? Or do you want to look, consider options that would make us more competitive? And what I want to do is, I want to explain in the next agenda item, you know, I talk about the aid formula, and there's a couple of keys that'll help the board get some insight on how the aid formula works, and how it's set up, and the impact. That's about the only tool we have worked with. How can we use the aid formula to the best of our advantage if we want to set us up for whatever that means? And we can talk about that in the next item. So, in summary, this is the ESER budget, the items in there. When you think of ESER $3, ESER $3 are really the goal of them. If you look at anything from DPI's plan to the Department of Education, was really addressing the long-term impact of school closure on kids. So, when you look at those items, you can see, and so, in the program type, almost all of those items, certainly in, in 2024, are looking at addressing that long-term impact of closure.
Can you, Julie, share what the aid, the high school tutoring help is? I'm just going to ask some clarifying questions on the descriptions, and I don't plan to take long, but.
Yeah, this one's, was one where we had Mr. Galliotto, and I'm probably saying that incorrectly.
Oh, okay.
He was doing some math help, and we're going to expand that with after-school help. Now, the, the end of the year last year, doing it as kind of an after-school program with kids that were struggling, and I don't know, Julie, maybe, I don't recall seeing additional hours this year, and I don't know where we are with that implementation this year.
I would have to find out, too.
But that's the, that was the intent.
We have after-school math support, I think, with him yet, currently.
Yep.
Okay.
So, that's, that's exactly what it is.
Okay. School year guest teachers.
Those are full-time teachers that were, we've got on staff to cover something that are working every day, subbing for teachers in the classroom. And the idea is that they know our system better, and they're consistently in the district, so they, there's not quite as much disruption by having new subs coming in all the time.
Because those were new positions, we had the board approve them. Actually, one by one, we started with a teacher at each of the three levels, and then we brought support staff forward, too, because we found that was a substitute crisis as well.
Then, alternate ed teacher would be filling Mr. Evil's position. That's the same position. So, it's not that we're creating a new position, we are just using ESER funds for that salary.
So, we have two, the Partners Program transition to the high school, it's now called Wings, right?
Yep.
With Mr. Lorenz. And then, we had a resignation recently in alt-ed. The board approved Gary Gumbert's resignation. We have yet to fill that position, so.
So, that was a targeted program in addition to Wings. So, that was a new position with ESER. And we were targeting kind of kids, freshmen and sophomores, that, to keep them on track before they get into a situation needing something like a release program. And that position is currently posted right now.
Last question is instructional technology listed in here. Tim, is curriculum or something different?
It's, so we've got curriculum listed in there, PD and curriculum. So, when we bring up something new, we want to make sure the teachers get trained, too. So, that's, that's why it's curriculum and PD. Technology, this year is going to be interesting, because Mark applied for some emergency connect funds, and those are through the, kind of like USAC and the E-Rate program. So, and again, it's a different form of COVID relief, and they're going to be doing the individual personalized computing devices, iPads, tablets, all that kind of thing, Chromebooks. But he's also got $350,000 to target technology that can include everything from the Wi-Fi, the switches, smart boards, whatever technology we need. And to back up a little bit, to balance the budget, we took that item out of Mark's regular Fund 10 budget last year. So, we had about $250,000 for technology that included devices, but with the emergency connect funding in ESER, you know, it's really hard to cut when you've got so much federal stimulus money to do things with. So, we took maintenance and technology, and that helped balance the budget. So, Mark's working with Amy and the rest of the technology committee to determine exactly how we're going to spend that $350,000 this year.
Okay. I'm just going to share it, because it's ESER budget, and I feel like it's appropriate to share. Window replacement is on here, and I feel like the one thing we have not had any real strong discussions on is building in grounds needs. I just have the thought process of, can we utilize ESER funding for a one-and-done type purchase instead of a reoccurring cost? And I, I don't know that we've had any targeted discussions, as we have for this long list of these reoccurring positions that we'll have to budget for moving forward. So, I, I don't know if it's necessarily a discussion topic at the moment, but more so statement feedback, I'm not sure. But we'll have to come up with funds in the near future, and.
So, when we looked at, when you look at the ESER funding cycle, let's, let's call it COVID relief funds. The initial ones were response to the COVID pandemic, and they were geared at things like ventilation was one that was targeted. Some districts went with improving their HVAC systems so that they could have better filtration. Some of them went with ionization technology. Others did like we did, where we were providing, we didn't even have one-to-one technology to begin with. And so, we were really using those dollars to get to one-to-one. And as we've, we can still, they call it responding to COVID, so you can look at things like, basically trying to social distance and trying to ventilate. So, windows being a maintenance item, they fall under that ventilation, and there's no question. It's eligible. Could we have targeted other, other things like HVAC? We absolutely could. And I, and I guess it's a kind of a balancing act between student achievement, focusing on student achievement, and operations. One of the things that could bring to future board meetings, I guess there's only going to be one more committee for me, but we have a, we have a really great analytics tool. And when you compare ANGO to districts of our size with similar demographics, our outlying expenditure is operations. Most districts do their improvements outside the revenue limit. Huge capital projects don't come within operations. They're outside. So, when you, when you look at, you know, we had, I talked a little bit about our fund balance and how we, when we were doing HVAC projects, we're spending down fund balance, and now we're sort of building that with, with the assistance of ESER. So, it's that fine line with, our operating costs are about, and I don't want to use the word double. It's not, it's the remodeling portion. Most districts are doing that outside the Fund 10 revenue limit, and that's the trade-off. It's, is it smart money? One-and-done is better. It doesn't hurt you, you know, like, what do you do when those parents get used to having that additional hands and support in the classroom? We're, we're, you know, we're, we're going to face that.
Of the positions that we approved and added, how many?
With ESER dollars?
Yes, thank you. How many were we unable to fill?
I want to say roughly five, and let's see if I still have that, Doc.
Well, Julie's looking, I can tell you a couple that are still on the sheet.
Oh, that's where I would be looking. What's that? This one? Yes. Thank you.
So, the biggest one, I think, is a couple of them. You know, we haven't been able to hire additional social workers, and we haven't, we, we really wanted to look at that kindergarten year, I think it was, that was targeted. that was targeted in COVID started, that we tried to do targeted teachers, one at each school at that particular grade level, first and second grade. And we've had that position posted for the better part of a year and a half, and have not been able to fill it.
So there are 11 vacant, but not all would be paid for with ESSER dollars. For example, we couldn't find a music teacher at the elementary or family and consumer ed teacher full-time. So we have non-licensed people in those roles, but they would be part of the general fund. But like targeted support, the board had approved, we still don't have any applicants for those. And those would be definitely the nice to have to help us address our achievement. Additionally, we would never have posted those if we didn't have ESSER dollars, for example.
I think we got a fourth grade teacher, at least one.
Right. Who slotted our title staff is not fully staffed, so if we could hire a fourth grade teacher, then we'd move that person to Title II. Just can't do it now.
Yeah, I was just thinking in terms of budget planning and ESSER, and maybe that can be a helpful starting point of what was approved, but couldn't be filled.
Right.
In terms of looking ahead.
Certainly, as we move forward, that would be the front line.
So Tim, sorry. Tim, would you go back to when you talked about the districts that are our size? And you said about basically certain things that they do are not within the Fund 10 budget that we do. Do you want to, just for the record, say what types of things you're talking about so that the public hears what other districts do?
Well, you know, you could start with, let's look at, let's look at the 10-year capital improvement plan. That's a pretty abbreviated list. And if you wanted a comprehensive list, which we've, we've done before, whether you do that, Jake does it with himself, with the assistance of vendors and professionals that he knows, that, that list would be much more comprehensive. And when you go back to the CISA 10 study, which was done back in, man, it's getting 14? Yes. And you start looking at our systems, and you look at life expectancy of systems, and how we have exceeded those life expectations, that kind of a list of deferred maintenance would be put together. And in very simple terms, look at the high school parking lot.
We try not to.
Yeah, that is something you would not accomplish under, typically accomplish under the revenue limit. You did it outside the revenue limit. So, and in the past, when we looked at the 90s and 2000, we ran an operating referendum, which is for operations outside the revenue limit formula. And those kinds of projects would get taken. Or you'd run a capital general obligation, a general obligation bonds and do a bonded project and get them all nailed down at one time, and then pay for that over the next 20 years. So you're improving. You know, when you look at the high school, the high schools getting to be 28 years, 29 years old, and, and you talk about like the air conditioning system, those costs are going to be, you know, probably in the neighborhood of, you know, I already did no figures now, but in excess of $20 a square foot cost. And at some point, you know, when you got almost a 30-year-old air conditioner, hey, you got to look at it. And, and again, as we've declined enrollment, we've cut, on the staffing side of it, we've cut all those support staff pupil service positions.
So basically, what you're trying to say is that because of our limited budget within Fund 10, the, our ability to do other things to, I'm not going to say improve what we have, but to replace things that will be going busted in the next couple of years, we need to think outside of Fund 10, which therefore means if we are going to do project work to fix our buildings, we would need an operational referendum. Okay, I just wanted to, so that we're talking the same language, so that people hear it here. Okay, that's where I was trying to go to. So that our people, so our public hear that a referendum may be needed to fix our buildings, because we can't fix them from within Fund 10 if we want to improve our children's education level.
Correct.
Okay, anything else on this topic?
And it would have to be through Fund 10? I'm just.
No, we're, we're talking beyond Fund 10.
Correct.
Which would be the referendum at some point to take care of our buildings. Anything else on that one, Tim?
Nope.
Okay, future budget projections?
And this one is, just the, it's kind of like a family photo. So let's, just so, yeah, this is one where I, you know, I could spend a whole workshop just talking about it, because I just find it interesting. So this is a visualization of the aid formula. And as a board, what's really interesting about it is, for me anyway, is there's a couple of things that are set. So the, so we've got primary, secondary, tertiary aid, and none of that really matters. We have three boxes of aid, and the boxes change size in any given year based on the appropriation of state aids. But what's cool is the ceiling of the blue box, the bar between the blue box and the green box, is essentially 90% of the allocation. So when you get to that point, that, that cost ceiling is about 90%. And it changes to make that box size between the aidable and the negative secondary aid changes to make that, that box size, they, they run some kind of a program and, and run the expenditures out in the aid formula, and they adjust that. What's interesting, what's interesting about the tertiary part of it, what I like about it is, that's set at average value per member. Okay? So that average value per member represents, you can see ANIGO is less than that. ANIGO's is about 70% of the property value per member of the state's average. The ceiling level, that 90% of shared cost is, it's last year, I think it was, this year, it was $10,800 and some dollars. That's 90%. Our low revenue limit ceiling is set at $10,000. So we're not even at 90% of what the state average is. So we're spending about $400 less on shared cost than the state is on an average. So that means the average is over $12,000. And how people are getting to more than that, when we talk about the, like an operational referendum, in ANIGO's case, that becomes part of shared cost. So that's how that average is, is typically higher, because I think there's, there's something close to 130 school districts that are, I think we heard John Humphrey say that number, or something close to that number. And they're doing it outside the revenue limit. So what's important is the biggest box is going to be, where does ANIGO lie in that blue box? And the further you lie to the left, and then up, the more aid you get. That number is based on, this year's aid is based on last year's number. The revenue limit is based on this year's number. So the enrollments are last year's, and the value of the property is based on spring and not fall. So you're looking at two different sets of numbers. But if I would throw in ANIGO's current equalized value into the aid formula, we'd have lost something like, I had it written down someplace, I can't find it now, something like $600,000 or $700,000 in state aid, that would be that much of a shift. And that enrollment that's used in the aid formula includes the districts, second, third Friday and second Friday count, so they count both of them. They add last year's summer school, and then they add the parochial school voucher students. So it's a completely different number as well. So the point that I, I want you to understand that is, when we talk about an operating referendum, or if we talk about, when we know, it's nice to know where you're going to be in the biennial budget, so you can sort of plan, the only tool we have left is to plan how you're going to end your end. So when you make that transfer to Fund 46, for example, in a year where you want to get aid, you make it before the end of July. In a year where you're thinking that you're going to get additional aid and you don't necessarily want to drive the taxes down, you can delay that transfer, because you can always put it in Fund 46. So the only tool we really have is, so like if you, let's say you wanted to, you were confident you could pass a referendum, and you wanted to have minimal impact on taxes, you'd want to pre-spend, so to speak. So maybe you would start the project on Fund $10 and spend down fund balance. So you do that in one year, and you get aid on it the second year. Well, the second year is when you'd have the operating referendum to kind of backfill, because now you're getting, you're driving up the, the cost of the ref, you're, you're driving up aid, which drops the cost of the referendum. So the bottom line is, you can, and then the next year, you're going to get aid on the referendum dollars. So it'll, it'll completely soften the blow, and it's a way to maximize your state aid for the benefit of the kids. Am I making any sense at all?
Makes a lot of sense. I'm curious if we've highlighted that prior, like that makes a lot of sense in terms of community buy-in, in my opinion.
So what districts do that have debt, they're playing the defense game. So they're taking, like this year would have been a great example, they're going to prepay debt, and who doesn't want to prepay debt? So if you set up, if your bonds are callable, or if you do an escrow account, you can do all that stuff, and you can, you can claim aid on it to soften the blow. We've tried that in the past, but then you fail the referendum, and now you've, you've driven down taxes even more because you've had more expenditures. So it's, it's, I wouldn't say Russian roulette, but it's a little risky, you know? And, and the problem where we're at now, 50 cents is 10% on the, on the levy. You know, when we, because we're at $5. If we go up to 550, that's 10%. And if you look at your tax bill, the legislature has put in a percentage increase or decrease from the previous year. So the year that we had the, I think it was a 12% increase, I got a lot of calls, and I asked, I can remember talking to people, they were calling me with a number of $75. And they were irate, and I would go, well, it's 75 bucks, or whatever it might have been, $100. But it's such a big percentage, that's what they see. So I think you, you, I would recommend that we would work with our financial advisor and really map that out, but that's the only lever we have. We can, we can use how we end the year, and how we plan on spending, explaining, you know, showing the public that we're spending fund balance for this particular reason. So that's why, if you understand where ANIGO is, where the potential it can go, and you never know what the other 420 school districts are doing, because they're, they're thinking stuff too, and they're affecting how this moves, but at least it gives you some idea.
So this one is the current years, what you have of this?
Yeah.
So we are sitting pretty right now, based on what you're seeing. Towards the top and to the left is good.
Yes. And then when we drop to tertiary aid, when we get into the green bar, you can see we're getting that much closer to the average, so it's proportionate. How, what part are you proportionate to the whole? And if, the further you are to the right, you know, your greater portion of the pie, you get less aid. So when we get into secondary or tertiary aid, we're going to be, depending on any given year, that 28 to 30%. So even that helps soften the blow. A million-dollar referendum is, you know, $700,000, so it's not as painful.
Still, if you run a referendum, the average formula you get costs up more complicated somebody in an edic.
Correct, because we're on, we're to the left.
Correct.
Because our average, we're 70% of the state average. And the further you are to the right, there's more equalized value per, per child, so the tax impact's going to be less. Oh, we didn't talk about projections.
I was going to say, what about this sheet that I asked for?
That's pretty dangerous, okay?
And I know it's a guesstimate, I know that. You won't, you will not be held to these numbers, I promise. Someone else will.
So why? So what I did is I took the numbers, and I took our enrollment, and I took our equalized value, and I didn't use, I didn't change equalized value. All I looked at was, because I didn't know where the spring number, the spring values were going to be, I said, hey, it's not fair to go 17% and shift us over that far. So I took with the same equalized value, the drop in enrollment, and whether there was any money added to the aid formula. And, and then I, so the first column is no new money. And you can see where we're going with aid, and you can see there's going to be a drop in the tax levy as a result. So we're just focusing on that revenue limit box with aid and Fund 10. The second column there shows Evers' plan without any additional aid in the formula. So normally that, when they're going to propose an increase, they're going to put proportionate amount in the appropriation for equalized aid. This is showing it with no additional aid. The, the thing that's kind of important to look at is, look at our revenue limit. Even with $350 per student additional, we're only getting $177,000 additional in the revenue limit formula. And we haven't had any increase in two years. So it, even with that budget, it'll be tough sledding in Fund 10. And generally, the, the aid that year is going to include an appropriation, so I would doubt that we'd get the 9.6% impact on the levy. And then I've got current year, just to show you the difference. So then the second half of it is per pupil aid. And per pupil aid is currently at $742 per student, and it uses the same third Friday count as the revenue limit formula, so it's a three-year rolling average. And Evers is proposing to increase that. And I would say his administration feels the equalization aid in the revenue limit is the fairest way to do it. There are proponents, like when you're way over on the right of that graph, you'd prefer it all being per pupil, because then it's equally split. But, so this shows, if there's no new money, and then I think if you look at it, you can see the change in aid indicates that, based on what I see for enrollment, our third, three-year rolling average is, we're going to lose the declining enrollment exemption, a huge chunk of it, because our, our three-year average is getting pretty level.
Yeah.
It appears like it's going to be pretty low. And if you, if it's not level, if we lose more kids than the estimate that I showed at the hearing, you get a one-time exemption, so it helps you. So this is kind of, sort of a worst-case conservative estimate. Then finally, the bottom box. Then finally, the bottom box is where are we going to go with special ed categorical aid? And under Evers' plan, he's proposing 45%. So I just ran the, the current budget through the categorical aid formula and those are the numbers that came off. So we're getting a little bit of increase if we spend all of Fund 27 and then a 50% increase under Evers' proposal.
Right.
And why that's important is because that's money out of Fund 10 going to 27. That $500,000 difference there, almost $600,000 difference, can be used by all kids, not just special education kids.
Okay. Any questions for Tim?
Okay.
Tim, only one more thing.
Yes.
Because I got, I have, I need you to do this before you retire. I asked you to, back in September...
Did I forget something?
Yeah, you did. Then you said, we talked October and then you said, no, 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 because it would need to be November. The properties.
Oh, the property listing, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You've got one more meeting. It's all right. You've been busy and you're going to get busier. But yeah, I would, we, we want that prior to you leaving us, just so we see what we have.
Sure. I'll try to, I'll do it a couple ways too, where we just have a list and I'll try to give Tony a map and identify the location so you can see that too.
Great. Yes, thank you so much. Okay, any other?
The purpose of that day was to see if there's any properties that we can...
That, well, the idea being that if we have properties, I know you told me that there are some that have, hey, if you're, if you don't want them, we're going to take them back. Well, the bonus there is it goes back on the tax roll, which helps all our people with their taxes. And if they don't care if we sell property, that would be a way to generate monies for the district for the fund balance.
So I, I think the listing that I have is probably Mary Jo Filmer that came to me and one of the former superintendents put it together. And it could be, we have additions and subtractions off the list, but the reversionary pieces are, I don't have verification from an attorney that that is in fact true. So if you, if you want, we could go, you know, I could ask Mike Winters or I could ask somebody to render an opinion on the title to see if in fact there is that. And I could identify the properties and get it to them and then I have them render that opinion. Most of them are reversionary to the county.
Okay.
So I don't, I'm not aware of any that are reversionary to a family.
Okay.
But I could have the attorney at least verify that.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you so much. Anything further? With that, I need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned.
All right, it is 7:30, so we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mary Kay, would you take roll call, please?
Jill Maddick Nelson?
Here.
Dr. Dave Bardo? J.D. Schrader?
Here.
Amy Downs?
Here.
Dr. Julie Sprague?
Here.
Danny Pyatt?
Here.
And then we have Angie Schreiber, J.D., Andy Mary and Katie Estranga.
And I'll just note that Dr. Dave Bardo was unable to attend tonight and did communicate that with Mr. Pyatt and Angie Schreiber is sitting in, sitting in on his behalf, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there anything for public comment?
No, I just looked.
Okay. We will move on to new business, letter A, local report cards.
Okay, so in your attachments, you have five different local report cards, which are one for each of our schools. Last spring, I attended a session through CISA 9, which was geared around local report cards, which are companion pieces to state test scores, somewhat state report cards, but it's more to tell the story of your school in the context of other variables than things that might be reported on other publicly known documents like the state report card. They're not just willy-nilly indicators, they're all things that are based on research and evidence. Some of you may have heard of Redefining Ready, which is another report card that's known across the state and it has academic indicators, which you'll see on the front of each of the school report cards. And then there are also career readiness indicators at an elementary level that looks a little bit different than a high school level, but there are examples of each of those for each of our schools. And then there's also a spot on each of the backs for points of pride. So if there was something that our schools wanted to showcase that might be unique to them, but really it's to highlight some of the good things that are happening that we might not otherwise see in another location. So, most of our principals are here tonight to talk through key pieces or field questions. They did a fantastic job of putting together their data, talking through and thinking about what they'd want to highlight, especially for the points of pride. Like I said, some of the indicators though are earmarked in regards to the research and are vetted to support career and academic readiness for on track to graduation. So, there were some limitations with what would be those indicators, but some of the other data was up for them to find and share with you. And then our hope is to share this with families as they join the school or share out now that we have some of these completed and share it with our current families now. I'd like to open it up, if there's any of the principals who wanted to necessarily highlight anything or share anything, I don't want you to not have the opportunity if you wanted to.
I have a question.
Sure.
For the middle school, it says 82% of students scored within the targeted range on Fastbridge. Can you just give a little bit more in depth?
The middle school math targeted range?
Yeah.
From Fastbridge?
Yep. So if you could just explain a little bit what the targeted range means on Fastbridge?
So from Fastbridge, we took a look at our students that were, what are the childrens again from our Fastbridge?
Sum risk, bowl risk or college pathway.
So we took all three of them.
High risk.
Okay.
Which is a different look to what we look at at Fastbridge typically. You just put the three top.
Okay, so what does 82% mean then?
Well, those three numbers equal the 82% from the low risk.
Okay. So what is the, the remaining, what would that stand for?
The high-risk category.
High-risk, not proficient.
Okay. Okay.
That's a good pointing out though, because we did talk a lot about the language around to make it most understandable for that one, so.
Okay.
Do you think if it's online, could you put a click on it and then it would be a more in-depth explanation versus something that gets sent in the mail?
It's a good idea. It currently is not like a live document where necessarily anything is clickable with more information besides the website link at the bottom to the school-specific website.
Sure. I, I, just for clarification, I think if you said something like 82% of the students scored within proficient, you know, and list the three.
Okay.
That would be easier to wrap your head around, I think.
I don't think any of it's probably easy to understand.
Oh, yeah.
Because there's just so many points of data, but like that's why I wanted to bring it to you, so there's the forward data and then there's the Fastbridge, but that's a, that's a good point. Because we were, when we were filming it on Tiel and I and Amy, we're just, we want to show that there is, we are doing fairly well with our math scores at that 4th, 2nd, 3rd level.
Mm-hmm.
And then how do you not get too much into the weeds?
Right.
Right?
And what did they score in the, in the previous years with that? Do you, do you know?
I don't know offhand.
Okay.
It's pretty similar, I believe, at the end of, our spring assessment to our fall was pretty close in range.
Okay.
Obviously, the year went up, so like our 7th grade moved to 8th grade. So again, that's kind of like, are you, is it apples to apples?
Sure.
Right?
Yeah.
Three or more activities, 100 or 20 students, those kids are busy.
In the back of the high school?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to say that community service opportunities for the middle school, the snow shovel club is great. I mean, I love that idea. They've helped out so many...
Yeah, tech club.
Oh, they've, they help so many elderly.
She's complementing the snow shovel club.
Yeah, actually, we, Ms. Molina started, she, she was only focusing with the band, but we're doing everybody. She's going to every single homeroom and asking them to be a part of a community service. It's not going to be just snow shovels. Some students had said, like, let's help out with the salvation bell ringing. So they're coming up with some ideas, so we don't even know everything, but we just knew that we are not, we don't have enough community, you know, involvement with our students. I mean, that was really a big push. So around self-abelonging is being one of our goals. We're really focusing on student clubs and interest groups.
Yeah, that is super cool. I love it. Maybe we can expand it to fall leaves. So you'd like to partner with Ms. Molina?
Yeah. She's very good at organizing. She's excellent. She takes it.
So I just, kudos, I just...
When aren't they shoveling? I mean, accurate snow.
She, yep, she has it all organized and then they have people, places that the kids can go and then she actually goes with them. And last year, they did, you know, the Penny Farm and the Silver, we had a really big snow tournament in December. They just all go to that location, the families take the kids there. Last year, Farmer's Home had food for them a couple different times. They got shirts, snow shovel crew. And it really, it was probably about 20 kids at the most, but the, the parents were just really involved and so that's why this year we said, like, let's get it out to everyone.
But so like, are they skipping math class?
Nope. This is after school, directly after school or on the weekend, not during the school day. So that's even above and beyond. Like she's not getting paid for any of this, she's doing this on her own.
Which is...
Because she feels it's necessary to, and so now we have other people buying into it, so, yeah. She goes above and beyond.
Yeah, good job, good, super.
What's Zello?
That's an online platform for our school counselors and also career exploration. So that's where they would look at their interests, career clusters, they would, when they're younger, they kind of just learn a little bit more about what they're interested in, in certain broad fields. And then as they get older, it starts to narrow, narrow, narrow what clusters they might want to go into. So it might start off, you know, doctor or medical, but then they get into really specified and targeted fields. It has a lot more in it than that, but it is the platform that kind of encompasses all of that ACP planning, if you hear those terms, academic career planning.
I have a question on East Elementary and what students monitor their own learning third grade portfolio. If, if somebody could share a little bit more of what that is.
Yep, so last year, we started early on with Jody Tomzak and Mary Young talking about, how do we know our third graders are ready to move on to fourth grade? So, we talked about how it would be good for the kids to monitor how they're doing and the progress they're making. So, Jody Tomzak is, really has a technology talent, so I kind of just let her go with it and her and Mary just came up with different categories. The main one was writing and what they're reading and they included some of their own personal interests. I have some recordings that I could share with you. So we, what we did is we excused our third grade team from parent-teacher conferences in the spring and we just held a portfolio night. So the parents came in and the kids, it was on the computer and we had different stations in each classroom and the parents just came in, they sat down, the kid talked through their, student talked through their portfolio and it was a really, really nice event. So, trying to get kids more aware of their skills and their strengths and how they can personally attract them.
And presenting, like that's a really cool component.
Yeah.
Some other little videos are really good. As I said, come on in my office, sit down, I'm going to press record and, and they just, like, no big deal. They just recorded themselves.
Tom, Tom shared that with me because we also know at high school at the senior level, but you're doing the portfolio.
Yeah.
So we are currently, we're working on our 7th grade portfolio, which is part of the Zello, the career planning. And we have, just in the infancy of, of working through, like, what do we want that to look like? But eventually, we want 3rd grade for everybody and then moving into 4th all the way up, we'd like to see something and I don't, I've seen other districts do this as well, but I think it really means more when some teachers say, hey, let's give this a try and check it out. So, we were impressed with what we saw from the 3rd grade.
I can put a link in that Friday thing that Julie sends out.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you for sharing.
Does it feel like we were all YouTubers?
Well, that is a weird choice in Zello. Youtuber and snow athlete.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions, comments, feedback on the report cards?
I just want to, again, commend the principals for their hard work and one of our school psychs, Megan Murphy, helped a lot to look at some of those data pieces and helped with some of that too. So, so what our intention is then is every summer when we review our data on our continuous improvement plan, this would be something we would update on a yearly basis and then reprint and publish on a yearly basis as well to keep current with what's happening in our schools.
So like Wests, it says percent proficient in ELA, is 23% better than last year?
Yes, that is students moving from 3rd to 4th grade. So you recognize that at, and North also put a key piece like that as well. So you recognize that at our elementaries, we don't have opportunity for that growth score that you have when there are the grade level after in that forward exam. We don't see that return on investment because the students are no longer in the building. So they did some calculations, I think both of them with the help of Megan a little bit in their own investigations and saw that those were the percent of increase for the students once they're 4th graders. So, combination of the efforts at 3rd and then into the spring of 4th grade year.
So we felt really proud of that because that is not something you will see when the report cards come out on November 15th. That data point won't be reflected, right, in that very heavy read. I, you had great questions with this. The DPI report card, as you might understand and remember, is really tough to understand all the components. So that's one area we really wanted to highlight for our families.
Do we send a copy of that home? Do we have a copy of the DPS?
Electronically, yeah.
Oh, so they get emails, so we could email them this?
And that's exactly what we're doing.
One other thing. The high school GPA, 2.8 GPA, says 38%. Is that reflective of 38? Can you share more on that?
38% of the students are earning a 2.8 GPA or higher.
Okay. Thank you.
And that 2.8 is the research base, so we didn't come up with that number, that was a vetted indicator.
Sure.
Yeah.
When is that grade group supposed to get us back to that study thing? When is that grade group supposed to get us back to that study thing? On the building we configured it?
They're coming to the next meeting, I think.
Yes.
I think so.
Yeah.
Buildings.
Building grounds, next week.
All they are.
See you there. It's like you're going to be on every committee.
See?
You can send it to them.
Are they ready to read the report, or are they just presenting? I don't know.
I'm not sure, yeah. Well...
I think they're asking questions at the next meeting.
Yeah, kind of like what we're looking for more.
Okay. He has it for this.
Your mother won't come.
Can I just add one more comment to the North report card? So when Megan and I were meeting, when we pulled that data for the board exam from third grade that moved to fourth grade, the other thing that we also looked at, which isn't on here, is how, like, the elementary is how we earn the report card score. So like, 75 percent of the report card score at the elementary, our elementaries, is based on achievement, and then the other percent is the graduation rate, so like, the attendance really is the key factor for that. And those two pieces are the smallest portions at the middle school and high school. So that's not really noted on here, but as we look at how the report card scores are developed, at the elementary, that, the achievement is 75 percent, which again is one of the smallest scoring pieces at the middle school and high school.
From a PR point, somewhere we got to put that out there, somewhere in writing, somewhere, that we lost our growth scores. I mean, we talk about it here, but there's only 20 of us who ever watch the meetings.
Last year, in the, I always write a letter that goes with the report cards, and I highlighted that. I did. We talked about the test scores, because West was very close not to even having an achievement score, because their third-grade number was so small. So few students missed it ratio by one or two, didn't we?
Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, we tried to explain it.
That would've been weird, so they could've got a really high score if everybody came to the school.
They wouldn't have had a score, period, because their N would've been too small. So.
And the score is only based on students that are present, like, in the district for the entire year. So I know specifically, Regal and I spoke, and like, there were a couple of students that did move in, and they did score proficient, but again, their rating isn't calculated in the report card.
Yeah, a lot of variables.
All right, so one more second. So you're going to try to write that on here somehow?
I don't know if that'll be again in Julie's letter, or...
I feel like putting it on here might not be the best place, but there is a companion piece that I know you're working on, maybe it's better suited there. This is supposed to be like, pretty brief and, but I do think that that's something that we need to message.
One more question. So on the high school report card...